Good morning, everyone. This is the Knox County Commissioners, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We have Sam Felkens with us this morning from Area Development Foundation to talk about the CRA that the Mount Vernon City has put into action on Upper Gilcrest Road. And so Sam's gonna educate us as to what that means for the city of Mount Vernon and Knox County. So Sam, thank you.
Thanks for having us. Us being me, I guess, today. But so the city of Mount Vernon has a CRA in place. Multi-family development is a negotiated deal. But this is a development that's been in the works for a while. Before I get into the specific development, I want to let you know, the reason why I'm here today is all CRA abatements have to be noted, you have to get notice. So we are officially giving notice to the commissioners and we've given notice to the schools that the CRA abatement will be in place. It's not an approval necessarily, it's just making sure that you're aware and that we're communicating. So this particular development is called Founder's Grove. It's just north of the Rockford Apartments. So those apartments that are going up behind the health, the health department. So on the say, on the right-hand side on Upper Gilcrest, if you're going north. This is that lot right there. It's going to be one hundred and fifty-six housing units, age targeted. So it's not age restricted like an Eastern Star, but it is age targeted. So it will not create ideally a lot of, you know, children for the schools. So they won't be getting a large influx of those. Like I said, they've been working on this project for a while. When they first started, the CRA was an automatic. You got a hundred percent minus the, the emergency levies and it was fifteen years. Jeff Gocke, who was my predecessor, was able to negotiate with them to do eighty percent for ten years. And then when I took the role and they finally had finalized their costs, we were able to reevaluate and that was still a little too rich for the developer. So we were able to negotiate it down to fifty percent of an abatement for ten years. So we went from a hundred for fifteen to fifty percent for ten. We really try not to give tax abatements out just to give them out. They had to show that it was the difference between them feeling confident and going forward. They're gonna be investing over forty million dollars into the site. So this abatement will save them, I think it's about two million dollars.
Well, it affect the Monroe Township's road levy and fire EMS levies.
So the land is already in a TIF. So the, those were already, those are already impacted by the, the TIF that has been in place for, for the city for a little while. This ten-year abatement will touch that because it's already been impacted by the TIF.
Okay.
So for the schools, the schools are really, it's important for ADF to have housing. We need to have housing, that's really important, but we need to have strong schools too. Just for some background, the schools during the, the Mount Vernon City School District during the ten years of the abatement are estimated to receive for their fifty percent share would be a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven? No, four hundred and fifty-seven. So that's one, four, eight, four, five, seven annually for the, the first ten years. And then once the abatement rolls off, starting in year eleven, they would earn a hundred, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-two. So currently, that entire lot produces ten thou, no, one thousand dollars in taxes. For all taxing authorities. So we're going from a thousand total collections to the schools alone getting a hundred and forty-eight thousand for ten years. The Career Center will be getting nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-two for the first ten years. That's the estimate and then it will be double that at thirty-seven thousand, four seventy-one moving forward. And every, and those amounts are specific to the schools, but other taxing entities would have the same impact except for the TIP.
These, these numbers, Sam, that, that would be as completion goes, correct?
So their estimate that the first year would be a partial because they're gonna be doing build-out. And then in year two, they anticipate being fully built.
Fully built.
Yeah. And this is a, this is being done by Lemon Development. Lemon is the group that built the Danbury Facility. They do really high-quality work. We're very excited to have them continue to be interested in our community. We know that what they're gonna do is a good product, which is helpful.
So these, these units, are they, are they single-dwelling houses? Are they condos? Do the people rent them? Do they own them except for the land?
Yeah, those are all good questions. So and in order to qualify for the multi-family CRA, they're all rentals. So these are rentals. Majority of them are duplexes or the, you know, they would get half of a, half of a duplex. There are, I believe, four apartment buildings, which with a little bit more density. So smaller one-bedroom units. And they have some amenities there to like pick up off-hordes and stuff.
So if people go out there right now, look at that development. You got the batch of apartments that have been completed and they're working on another batch. Behind the. Yes.
Phase two.
Yeah, so this phase is, is going to be further east and north of the current, the, the current buildings that are being done?
It's directly north.
Okay.
So it's on the, so that was all one plot of land. One farm that went from Coshockton Avenue up to Upper Gilcrest. That was all annexed before I was in this position. And then the middle portion was the apartments. There's a portion along Coshockton Avenue that's held for a future commercial development. And then this is the northern section that's left.
So refresh our memories, how many apartments that are there immediately to the, the right? And then the next batch that's being built, how many are units are there?
If, if I could, I'm gonna look it up so I can make sure.
We thought you had that memory.
I think it's, well, I don't wanna guess. Luckily, I have it right here.
But that's a different developer.
Yeah, correct. That's Rockford.
Rockford.
Yeah, so I mean, I have a, here are the site plans for Founder's Grove. Just what we're talking about today. It is. You know, they'll have a looped drive. It's, I know that the folks on the video can't certainly see this, but this is the, the plans for Founder's Grove.
Okay.
But these are.
And how many units are there?
I, I think it's a hundred and fifty-six, but to be verified, we have it up here.
And they're all, and they're all rentals.
They're all rentals. And so these ones are the duplexes and then these are the one, two, three, four.
Have they said what they expect to rent, then the rental price would be?
They've done some market analysis about that, but I don't think that they've shared.
They share that, okay. Okay. And this is age-driven, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah. They call it, I think sixty and better.
Well, I know initially there on Yogg Road where Flanders Chase, I think, just purchased like a hundred and eighty acres. That was, was going to be a fifty-five and over development and it didn't get completed. So it's interesting that this and, this one's coming back to be.
Yeah. That's your backyard yard, right?
It was right beside my property.
Yeah.
And then it was, it was gonna be, you know, two hundred, I think, homes in there. So is this a key indicator that our county is aging quicker than we?
Yeah, our median, our median age is higher than the, the state and national average.
So therefore, these are a necessity at this point.
Correct, and we have many people in our community that are living in homes that, you know, that are above what they can, would like to maintain. So.
So conceptually, this opens the idea for younger people to move into their house so they can move in.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep. And the, whereas the apartments just south of that is more geared towards young professions, right? So and those are, have overfilled. So they, the demand for those is very high.
Yeah. Timeline as to when they hope to have everything fully operational?
They wanna, they wanna do building all next year. So my guess would be end of twenty twenty-seven.
And do you know when the Eastern Star is gonna have all theirs completed?
No, sorry, I don't.
In Liberty Crossing?
So the infrastructure is all in for Liberty Crossing, vertical will start soon. But yeah, all the roads and the water lines and the silver lines are all in.
Good. Okay. May sound like an odd question, but I, I gotta ask it.
Sure.
This, all this build that is going on, is it generating jobs for the people in the area? Because I know most of this is probably perva, is it prevailing wage or no?
So no, the construction job, I mean, well, I don't know what they're paying.
Right.
You know, they could be paying at the prevailing wage level, but they're not required to.
Right.
Yeah, we have a lot of construction jobs.
Good.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so we have a short-term waiting for that. But then, you know, when I look at the people that are in the apartments, the young professionals, all those people are, are teachers and nurses and, you know, all those jobs too.
More professional.
We're filling, yeah, we're filling roles that we were having a hard time filling.
Good.
So it's, it's helpful.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For the update. Appreciate you squeezing this into your schedule.
No, I appreciate the, the ability to come meet with you in person.
And yeah, I'll, I'll need to find out a little bit more about how the TIF affects the Monroe Townships, Road Levies and Fire Medicate and Most Levies.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know how that was communicated to the township trustees.
Yep, and I, and that was a city-driven, and we weren't part of that necessarily, so I'm.
And that's been affect for a minute though, right?
So there was a TIF on Coshockton Avenue that expires either this year or last year. These are, this is a new TIF because of the development that's coming. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
Get out of here.
We were.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can get it. I let Kyle know, we're early, so maybe come on down. All right, we have a proven advertisement of Mount Vernon News for a legal notice invitation of bid for CDBG Village of Danville Memorial Park improvements.
Motion approved.
Second, in those favor, say.
All right.
Then we have a, approve a local emergency planning committee application of LEPC member appointments. And I think this is, let's see, adding.
I have Rick Miller, Tim Calahelli and Jeff.
There you go, adding those three to the LEPC, yep.
Motion to approve, second, in those favor, say.
Okay, then we have a utility permit, Olympia Gas of Ohio on Mishy Road and Pike Township.
Motion to approve, second, those favor, say.
And then a utility permit, Mercury Broadband, Butler Road, Pike Township.
Motion to approve, second, those favor, say.
All right. And then Mercury Broadband, Nunda Road, Pike Township and Brown Townships.
Motion to approve, and second, those favor, say.
Olympia Gas of Ohio, Thomas Road, Cluck Township.
Motion to approve, and second, those favor, say.
And then a subaward grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, Federal Transportation Administration. And for the bus and bus facilities program, this is for the twenty twenty-six grant year for our Knox County Transit in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Is that for our facility?
No, no, we're not getting any money for facilities.
Okay. Motion to approve, and second, those favor, say.
And then approve Knox County Department of John Family Services Retention and Contingency Plan Revised, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve, exactly, those favors, yeah.
And then we have one add, we had slightly LEPC. Let's see, this is the Knox County State Emergency Response Commission. And let's see, what is this relating to?
It's a service contract, yes, at the page, right there.
Okay, what's the services for? Okay, just that, yeah, the EMA Director will agree to provide the following services for LEPC. So that's ready for you to bring and sign.
Motion to approve, second, those favor, say.
Okay.
There's Bill, you can sign it.
Okay. So now we have Kyle Webb with us to educate us on what we are in the IT department, things that are going on there. Thank you, Kyle, for being with us.
Thank you. We've, uh, we've been busy, we've been, we're busy, really busy the last six months and doesn't look like it's gonna let up anytime soon. But since our last report, we assisted B O E through election day. That went very smoothly, nothing major to report there. I emailed all the departments in the county. There's a few outstanding odds and ends, but I've emailed all the departments for computer replacements that they'll need in twenty twenty-six. We've completed the server migration for the servers to handle our logins and all of our file storage in the county. Trevor has been working very hard on that. We've installed the new digital signage TVs in the new lobby. And we are getting ready to install in the front lobby as well.
So you'll take the billboards that are there or would this be in addition?
It's just one.
Just the one.
Not the directory.
The ones that's on this wall, yeah.
Yeah. And then we'll just have like a slideshow that goes through the things that were normal in the bulletin board. We fully wrapped up the, with the city. We migrated them from their mountvurninohio.org to mtvurninohh.gov for all their emails and everything. So they are on a dot gov finally. That was a lot harder of a process than was expected, but that is taken care of for them. I have configured quarterly trainings already for twenty twenty-six. So instead of the one yearly training, there will now be a quarterly training. And it's fifteen minutes each quarter, we have short video. Actually, I think the third quarter is actually like a interactive game kind of thing that it has. But that'll give you basically an hour throughout the year of cybersecurity training, which is pretty much the standard is to have at least an hour of training. So bringing it up into each quarter is a lot better than telling people that you sit down for an hour at one time and take the cybersecurity training for, so.
So will every employee be required to do this?
Yeah, everyone that has, basically everyone that has a county email will have to do it because a lot of it's sufficient. You know, it's the people getting scam emails, asking for information or having them click on a file that requests your username and password and those kinds of things that really expose the county. It's pretty much if, if people are gonna get in anymore, that's pretty much the way that they do it is through the email system. So training our users is the best defense against that. Mallor and I worked very hard on putting together the twenty twenty-six budget spreadsheet to has all our subscriptions and recurring contracts and agreements for all IT services. It's, there's a lot more to it than you think, but we worked through all that and we have a pretty good tracking sheet on that now going forward. That should be a lot easier future years. Ongoing projects, the animal shelter, they would like a digital sign, kinda like ours, but it's going to show images of like the dogs and, and things like that at the animal shelter. So we have ordered a, a TV for them and the device that displays all that. And we'll have to start putting that together for them. We've been working with municipal court. They're leaving their current system for court records and things through Civica and moving to Equavant, which is what our clerk court uses and our courts use. So we've been assisting in that migration for a long time, but right now it's starting to pick up a little bit because we're getting closer. I think they're early next year, they're looking at migrating over. City, I, I'm still getting numbers and for them for computer replacements for twenty-six. I've been working with nine one one, talking with Central Square. They apparently offer a cloud version of our CAD software. So instead of having servers on-site that handle that, it would be internet-based, which could provide a lot of flexibility and redundancy if it's done right to nine one one. So directly with that, you could, they could operate wherever they needed to. So if you need a, a stand-up, you know, a post somewhere, they could, they could do that and dispatch from pretty much anywhere. Now, the phone part of it, that's the tricky part that we saw have to look into. But I know if you just need CAD access, it would really simplify the process, especially like all the cruisers. They'd be able to just hit a website instead of, you know, having a VPN and, and all the intricacies that go into that for security. So we're getting some pricing from that. I think we have a meeting today that should go over some of that pricing information, so we'll know a little bit more after that. We've been reviewing some firewall replacement options for the county. We have to do that in the beginning of the year, when the first quarter, because our licensing runs out five years. Andrew's been working and preparing for the state of the county video, getting everything put together and ready for that. I've been working on the documents for the other supportive agencies for the cybersecurity program. We've been working with the jail and this Keith Group on their new commissary project, which is still going live December eighth, as far as we know. Some of that work has required us working with the current, with the Central Square and linking the two systems together. That's been the difficulty, at least on the hour end, is getting those two to talk and share information between each other. And then the sheriff's office, they've got other vendor changes that we've been working with them on. We've been, we're in testing right now, so appropriate given on court, they are moving their servers to our primary server stack. So instead of them having their own servers that stand alone, it's all getting integrated into the county systems, which is a lot easier and, and cost effect, more cost effective to do that. And Trevor's been working with tension on that and we are in testing right now. Picking sure all the issues are ironed out before we go live, but most of it is already running on our, our new systems for them. We still have some battery backup systems to install. And various closets has not been a huge priority. We have slated that password change tool, we put that in the budget proposal for twenty twenty-six. Have not heard an updating a little bit on the police department planning. I think we're, I think it's pretty much up to the designers at this point. Think they have pretty much all the information they need from us for now. I am not, still don't know any dates for city hall move. I've been planning and put together a proposal on the equipment they'll need to buy to make that happen. I'd like to get it done sooner rather than later because we're, otherwise it's gonna put us in a huge rush and really tight timeframe if we wait any longer. So I'm hoping I can get a feel from them soon to get that stuff ordered.
Do we have a contract agreement with them for this additional work?
No, no, we haven't, no.
And have we talked about it?
Well, I think we still waiting to see what, what the extra work really entails, right?
Yeah. Yeah, um, we're not gonna be running any, as far as I know, we're not running any wiring or anything like that.
Were concerned about it.
Yeah. We're not doing that.
Care of all that.
Yeah, but we do need to put in, they wanna move, you know, their servers and everything there, which we're currently hosting them here. So we'll have to move all that equipment, get the building set up for them. So there's just a lot that's gonna go into that and then just physically moving all their computers, desktops, printers.
So I'm, looks like we're doing a lot of more, I'm not sure what the word, but do you have the room for all the systems to be adequately operated that you're talking about?
Yeah, we've, when we build out our, we replace our system, we build it out to handle more than it needed because we assume that these kinds of things would eventually happen. So we have the storage capability to do it. Now, I, I think with the, and I'll, I'll check with that. I think we had an agreement with the city that they would purchase some of the equipment for this Equavant merger for more storage. But off to this packet, well, we, we said with that, but right now, yeah, we, we've got all the space that we need right now. Hopefully it doesn't balloon on us, but for right now, we're doing, we're doing well and we don't need to purchase anything else to maintain that. Now, the city, as far as I know, this, the council did approve the IT agreement, the renewal, the three-year renewal. We haven't seen it sent to us yet, but they approved for the Service Safety Director to enter in that agreement. And then again, with their move, you know, the city phone system. We're waiting on, on that before we make any major changes. And the last two items are things we just have on hold because there's enough going on over at the sheriff's office to add anything else. So those, those aren't emergencies, so they kind of put on the back burner.
Yeah.
But.
Good. Perfect. Yeah, no, it's, we're all kinda waiting for the city to say, hey, Kyle, bring your troops down here for new city hall.
Yeah, I'm a.
Courthouse and everything else.
Where we're hopeful that it's not gonna be like a, hey, we're moving in tomorrow.
Yeah. Can you be here Friday, Saturday and something?
Yeah.
Get us open Monday?
Yeah, yeah, hoping to avoid a situation like that in Boston, so.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you.
What was up there?
Yes.
Morning.
Good morning, Ms. Laura. So now we have our nine-one-one, we're need. Thank you, Laura, for being here, appreciate.
Yes.
You given us updates, you do, thank you.
I don't have a whole lot today. We've got our numbers there, of course. Those are not where they normally are. Other than that, Nicole and three of the supervisors attended the Opelrod Training Session that was November fifth. They all felt it was beneficial and informative and really enjoyed getting to go to that to learn, so. Nicole will be teaching our Public Safety Telecommunicator Class the weekend of November seventeenth for two dispatchers that are still in training. And once that's completed and they pass, they'll move on to our Emergency Medical Dispatch class.
How many classes after that, or would this be the last class they'll take or?
That would be the last one as far as required education by the state. But they still have their time in the chair to complete. And then each year, of course, the state requires dispatcher stay certified in that EMD and then continuing education credits every year, so.
So how many education credits are they required to have? Is it every year or is it every two years?
For the state, they check every year in the audit and I believe is twelve. However, for Emergency Medical Dispatch, it's twelve per year, that's certified every two years. So and they could get that numerous ways, whether it's a class, some in-house training, different things like that. Some in-house training, different things like that.
Now, that that training is added on their time, or we pay them for that?
We pay them for that. Uh, and dispatch has started their new schedule of working the two twelves, two eights, so far so good, so.
And that gets them three days off, right? Oh, three days off.
Three days in a row. Yeah, they really seem to. The majority of them seem to. Be happy and.
And are we still at twenty right now? Laura, we fully staffed and how how many are in training?
Two.
And when do you perceive like doing twenty fully staffed? How far out are they?
I would say one is probably three months out and the other one maybe four or five months out.
So give them then the three days off. How's your minimum staffing at that point?
Well, minimum staffing is three.
That's our requirement.
That's the required.
But you give them three days. So people three days off. What happens if somebody calls in? Sick.
If there are only three scheduled and one of those three call off, we have to call in overtime for that. Yeah.
But they were working in a way that really, it didn't affect. The minimum staffing. There still has, how many, I, you have a number, but we talked about how many people. Per shift are actually assigned, and then of those, people have their days off and.
Right, right. So, you know, some days there's four to five scheduled if no one's taking off or anything.
Right.
Um, but if someone is taking off, then it can drop down to three and then if.
Why my concern is not that you have people there, it's the response time of the people that are there. If somebody calls off, what is that like? Because if you have three as a limited, one of them call off, you're trying to get somebody to come in overtime. The calls still don't stop, so what?
Right, so they have to call in at least two hours ahead of time. So we have two hours to pull that stop.
And you've been successful at that?
Well, we can, you can manage it very, for the contact, we take volunteers first. If we don't, then we. Then they're mandated in, and we keep a list of who was ma- mandated last. I don't think that happens a lot. Normally you get volunteers, but we do.
For the most part, we do, yeah. For the most part, we have a few that they love overtime.
We we are adequately covered, I guess, if that.
With a minimum of three, yes.
Yeah, when we had eighteen and we went to twenty full timers, I mean, that obviously helped. That's basically what you're saying is you've got, which it's not an exact size, but you've got. Six to seven assigned per shift. Now, within there, you have people that have scheduled day off. Those kinds of things, but typically what you, you're actually trying to staff to what, five? Is kind of what's scheduled is five people. They have five chairs.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it it's great when there's more than three.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah.
You're happy, basically, the way that it works. Minimum staffing, amount of employees, response time.
I would like at some point to see the minimum staffing to be four.
That's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
Just because of the increase in calls and. Uh, things that are, you know, happening now and the work they have to do. I mean, you know, there's. There's been more added responsibilities over the years per se than they used to have, especially technology wise and. What all they have to add to calls and.
And then the downside of that, Barry, so we, Laura and I have had these discussions, so when you go to that, you're gonna mandate employees. To work more, so it's gonna, you know, there. It's not, you wanna volunteer to come in, you're gonna be mandated to come in, so that's a morale issue.
But even if you're mandated to come in, doesn't that make your schedule more? Less rigid, more s- stable, you know what I mean by that? So you're gonna have X amount of days off with minimum staffing level. It's not gonna change.
Right, you can't be mandated on your days off. You always will have your days off.
Right.
Um, so. Yes, of course. With them working twelves on Sundays.
Right.
You you can't mandate them attached to that shift because we won't work more than twelve in a twenty-four hour period. But, you know, there are people that are working eight on those days also.
Well, Jason had command though that I just.
Well, no, I mean, Laura and I, we have these discussions. We've had them a lot, and that's, that's a. That's a downside. If you go to four, you're, you are gonna force people to work if if that fourth chair is not filled. And then we've also kind of, Laura's, I think, started or looked at some of those numbers. There's some shifts. That could probably use the four mandate or the four. There's other shifts that. To force somebody to come in and work overtime to just fill a fourth chair.
Correct.
Their call volume.
Be overnight.
Eventually, your night overnight call volume drops, I'm assuming, versus the daytime.
So that's where.
You can see that too.
You set a mandate by shift, not a mandate by organization.
Right.
That forces them, you know, I'm gonna call you at, in the middle of the night, tell you you're being mandated to come into work, and then you come in and there's. The call volume's not even there.
Right.
Versus during the day or in the afternoon shift, you.
A lot of uh agencies will, that's what they'll do. Those overnight hours or hours where the call volume is on as high. Then their their minimum could be three. The other hours, it's four. And if you look at the call volume hours by day. You're gonna see, starting at about.
Once everybody has a cup of coffee.
Eight at night. Until about eight in the morning.
Right.
So you know, you you've got that twelve-hour period there, eight to eight. That it would probably not be necessary.
And we do handle this, all the cities.
Everything.
Yeah, and they have about um, what I've seen recently, six thousand uh runs for. Their squad and that other stuff, so that's six thousand plus whatever happens in.
In the count.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's just fire EMS. That doesn't count law enforcement.
Yeah.
So. And other things, you know, we handle. Annual patrol calls, anything with probation and parole. You you know, there are numerous other things they handle besides just law, fire, EMS, but.
I think the thing that stuck out to me unfortunately was the suicide versus.
We've had twelve so far this year, and we only had four last. So, and we still have November and December to get.
The staffing thing is quite a fuggle. If you're interested to get on there, Laura will try to explain the reasons to you, but it is. You know, because you. We have five stations. Right, that we operate, so. You don't want six people on a ship because.
The only way I would want six is if there was the supervisor, and then that way that supervisor has that ability to monitor everything.
So under the union, does the supervisor, supervisor fill in? Or is that a pay grade that they can't? Be operational, do you know what I mean by that?
They are paid more, but when it comes to overtime, it doesn't matter if it's the supervisor to call off or dispatcher.
Yeah, they're all in the same union, Barry.
My big thing is response time. You know, if if you're short. Staff and our response times are lagging, of course, that puts a whole different light on. The community.
Right, one person can only do so much in it.
Exactly, that's exactly right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to look at was our. Calls by class of service. And uh if you look at here, the the nine one one calls, that's the only one that actually separates out your landline, your voice. And your wireless. And the landlines were less than half a percent. Yeah, uh, the voice was at like one point seven four, and then the wireless was thirteen point thirty. It it separates it out that way because it includes the admin calls, which. Half the calls were admin calls, but it doesn't separate those admin calls out as far as what. Type of call it was coming in. But I can guarantee you it was mostly wireless there too. Yeah, so uh. I always think that's just interesting to see, because like when I started, like I said, we. We were on phase one, not even phase two, so you didn't get a location from a cell phone. You just. Got the location of a tower. That was it. And so, yeah, now it's so different.
So. Yeah, so now with the cell phone, we have location. Um, do we, are we uh able to do text through cell phones now and?
So.
Text and emergency.
We don't do text to nine one one yet. We're still working with the state, and the state's still working. There's like, oh, I wanna say seventeen counties, I. Think now it might be that many that they've kind of piloted to see. So within the next five years, they want all eighty-eight counties on. That system so that texting is available. Now. Through our rapid SOS, we have had a couple texts come through. But that's not typical. And of course, you should always call if you can before you text. Always.
Yeah.
Some situations I get that. Maybe you can't call. Texting is your only option, but so. We haven't really put that out there yet. Um, because it's just through our rapid SOS mapping system where it shows those come in, but we have had a couple. So. Yes. And through that system, it's a little harder too to keep those records. Of that call. So that's why we kind of hones on with it, because we need that record of that call. Case we would need it for anything, but.
Yeah, because everything's recorded, right?
Everything is recorded, yes. Even the admin lines.
Have you, have you really heard what if the, those seventeen counties that are in that test of how come I wonder how many texts they're actually getting? I can't imagine it's a lot.
I'm not sure about that now, but I know when Delaware County went to text to nine one one even before the state thing. Oh, I cannot remember the number, but I do know it was definitely under one hundred for the year. So.
It has to be a special situation.
I think Laura's talked about that. It's a situation with maybe like uh an abduction or. Truly can't, otherwise you were in the top of somebody and telling.
In the mouth.
Yeah, or maybe you're in a domestic situation and you don't want the other person to know you're calling. Maybe they think you're just texting your friend or something. Now. We have gotten calls before, like from a friend who a victim has texted and said, please call, but uh. Yeah, so. Um, but again, yeah, you should always call. Before you text if you can. So.
Wow, it's a very tough job, and we appreciate it.
I appreciate that. So do they. It is a tough job.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Not everyone can do. No, great.
All right. Have a good rest today. It's almost Friday.
Yes, it is.
Is the uh. Treasurer state rep, are they just coming in to do a meeting with you guys? It's not, it's coming in for them to stop in.
She wanted to um update the commissioners on a program called Buckeye Business Advantage. She didn't, she never confirmed with me when I sent her a reminder.
So we could go ahead and adjourn if she showed up.
If she, if she shows up and come back live, and if she doesn't, then we would adjourn. Soon as she comes up, that's scheduled for eleven fifteen if if she arrives, but that's interesting. She didn't reach out to confirm.
Yeah, I emailed.
Yeah, motion adjourn. We stand adjourned and and we may come back at eleven fifteen if um. See Brooks uh Billman shows up from the uh state treasurer's office. So everyone have a great weekend. We don't come back. Oh, welcome back, everyone. And we have Brooke uh Billman with us from the. Treasurer's Office State Treasurer. Thank you for being with us, Brooke, and you're gonna. Talk to us about the program that's it's available for the people here in Knox County, so. Go ahead and and teach us.
Thank you. Well, I did just want to stop by and just. Let you guys know what the state treasurer's office has been working on. So this is our newest program, Buckeye Business Advantage. And it was launched in October. And it is available on our websites and is now available with participating local financial institutions, banks, and credit unions. So Buckeye Business Advantage is a small business, that's the demographics, so small businesses. It's an interest rate reduction loan program. So the idea is that if you are fifty-one percent or more headquartered here in the state of Ohio. And you have under a hundred and fifty employees, you will be eligible for this program. Um, the loan process and. Oh, I thought that was gonna make it. I'm so sorry. Um, so the loan process is relatively easy. The paperwork, you'll just go through your local participating institution. Um, we'll run the paperwork through the state treasurer's office, make sure everything checks out, checks all the boxes. And then the whatever institution that you do decide to work with, they will continue that process. Um, it's a two-year loan. Around three-ish percent, uh, up to a million dollars to help kind of reduce that interest rate. Um, it's very similar to our AgLink program. So we kind of took our AgLink program, near to, and made Buckeye Business Advantage. Um, so we tried to keep all of our programs pretty cohesive and as simple as possible for the people of Ohio to use. The idea of Buckeye Business Advantage came to fruition kind of last year through talking with members of the community, um, local small businesses. And we wanted to be able to show them support. We love the attention the state of Ohio is getting and the economy thriving with. Bigger corporations coming in and kind of planning their databases here, data centers, Google, Amazon, Honda, the attention that our state is getting. We absolutely love that. Um, that's doing a lot of great for the state of Ohio. We just didn't want our small businesses to feel forgotten or left behind. So after we spent all of last year kind of promoting our program, Ohio Home Bear Plus. And working and talking with the members of the community and hearing their concerns about. Um, potentially getting overshadowed, we had this program kind of born and worked on all of last year, this year, and now it is officially launched and live. So that is kind of what we have been working on. Um, we do have ten other programs. Um, each targets a different demographic of Ohioans, so we try to make everyone feel included in some way, shape, or form in the state treasurer's office.
Is this loan actually through Ohio, or are you administrating it and then selling it to somebody as a loan? Do you know what I mean by that?
I think I know what you mean by that. Um, but yes, that is run through the the state treasures. We have allocated a percentage of the state budget to kind of.
Or it's through the state?
It is through the state, yes.
Now, uh, is there a list of banks that you put out there that are here in uh Knox County? Or is any bank in Knox County that functions uh had that connection already with the treasurer's office?
So this uh program specifically is, since it's launched, um, there's not. A ton of banks at the moment signing up for it, because of course there has to be kind of like some backdoor approval for them to be able to launch their loans. So what we do have currently on our website, we do have a list of credit unions and banks authorized that have been approved and now can. Allow this program to go through their institution. Um, as far as Knox County, we know that a lot of your guys' banks and credit unions do our AgLink program. And we are just going, um, assuming that they're also in the process of with Buckeye Business Advantage. Um, but that is listed out on our website.
So two-year loan doesn't seem like, um, that's a lot of time if you're getting a million-dollar loan. Uh, you can have some serious revenue to be paying that back. Um, are there limitations as to the pur- purpose of the loan? Um, you can you use it for only buildings or, uh, you know, are there parameters as to, you know, you can't use it for?
There are parameters. This has to be used for profit for business, so this is something that just has to help your business. Um, what that means to the business, uh, there is a little bit of room for interpretation, whether it be. Um, improvements to your business, helping pay salary of employees, so you do have slight wiggle room, but it does have to be used for profit for your business.
I'm not sure if that's clear to me, profit for your business, uh.
I hope I did not say that. The wrong way. Oh, sorry, your business has to be organized for profit, and the loan has to be exclusively for business purposes. So I did miss for that. Yes, can't be a nonprofit. That is what I meant to say. Thank you for making me clarify that.
Well, I, yeah, for those who are watching us, you know, I didn't want them to be confused.
Would hate that.
Yeah, so um I, you mentioned the the big dogs, you know, Amazon and uh, you know, the Intel people. Um, so as long as they have a hundred and fifty employees or less. They're eligible for that. Um, and why just the two-year limit on the loan? Cause I thought you said you could, that loans can only be linked to two years.
That is a good question. Uh, two-year limit is, again, it's just kind of what we've mirrored off of our other programs. That timeline seemed to have worked for them. Uh, so just. Previous knowledge, we assumed it would work for this. Uh, one of the best parts of the programs we've built out in our office is we really take into consideration. Previous knowledge, we assumed it would work for this, uh, one of the best parts of the programs we've built out in our office is we really taken in consideration. What the community wants and what the community needs. And for something of a small business, one year just didn't seem. Long enough to potentially help them, so we thought two years would give them a good window of being able to have this one.
This seems, I mean, unless I'm missing something like a help one. You, you know what I mean, I have a. And I, I think they're assuming by then if you. Maybe be on your feet and ready to roll. Yeah, so, uh. Do, do you anticipate that some of the, since this is a help load? That some of these businesses may not be able to pay you back? Um, as, uh, do you have some calculation as to how many will actually fail? Um, to be able to pay back because of their business not being, um. They'd be in a high risk.
So with this program, everything goes through whatever financial institution that the person or company chooses. So that is something that that institution has to have the. The thought process for and the way to kind of like curb any fail safe of not being able to get paid back, so that's not something our office would deal with. That is whatever institution the person goes through.
Prerequisite or? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good question though, but that's not something our office deal with.
Yeah, I, uh, hopefully, uh, um, it, it works out well, um. I know that a lot of companies, uh, in Knox County, they've done, they think grant wise when they're. Trying to make any changes, starter ups, um, it'll be interesting to, to see whether it's a. You know, program that the state will continue on after two years.
We're very excited to see what happens and. Of course, that'll be up to the next state treasurer, whomever that will be, see what they would like to do with the programs that treasurer's break has created.
Yeah, oh, good. And I, I see you have, uh, brochures there, so we can put those out on our table out there that.
Penny has been most kind to already tell me I could do that, so I grabbed a little.
Yeah, oh, oh, great. Uh, anything else?
No, I'm, I'm fine, thank you, thank, thank you for stopping in, seeing us. Safe travels.
Nice, thank you. I'm gonna off to give some to the treasurer as well. Is there anything else I can think back to the state treasurer's office, any messages I can give to him?
Um, yeah, telling to keep lowering the interest rates is. We, we appreciate what, what you're doing with he does.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. And so with that, we, we are including our business, uh, for today and everyone have a great weekend.